Welcome, everyone. I'd like to let the record show that all board members are here except Bruce Ritter. He'll be here in just a little bit. But I would like to call the public hearing for the post-tax levy to order. And I would ask you to come present that before we ask for public comments on the tax levy.
Good evening. So as Mr. Lee has indicated, it is time for our tax rate hearing. This is an annual event and keeps us in compliance with Missouri statute 67.110. We also have Board Policy DC2 that addresses the process by which we conduct the hearing and provide information. And the information that's been posted for your review and for that of the public indicates a request for a tax rate in total of 4.0928. That represents a decrease over last year's levy in total by .0182, so just under 2 cents. The operating levy would reduce from 3.561 to 3.5428 in total, and the debt service levy would remain unchanged at .55 cents. The calculation is based on the assessed valuation coupled with the Consumer Price Index, which is a cap of 2.1 percent. And in order to do this, we use pro forma calculation data reports that are provided to us by the state auditor's office. And we fill those out. Those get submitted to the Greene County Assessor's Office, and we then provide that information to the state as well. So overall, relative to the budget that we provided to you at the end of June, this results in an overall increase of just under $400,000. Of that, about $256,000 is attributed to operating and the remainder to debt service. However, we don't typically bring you a budget amendment on that until we see that come to fruition after the tax bills have been let and the revenue is actually received. So that would be what we could anticipate moving ahead. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. This time I would open up the public hearing for public comment on specifically the advanced tax levy. Seeing that, we will close the public hearing and move on to our board agenda. With that, I would ask Theresa to come up. Theresa, come up.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to two Kickapoo High School students who will be leading the pledge. This is Bryce Cole and Chandler Nyswonger, and they're members of the Student Council Cabinet at Kickapoo, and they're both seniors this year. So congratulations to them.
Well, no one told us you were supposed to wear that shirt. How do you know? You need to follow me inside.
I didn't know we were supposed to dress that.
As leaders on student council, they work together with other student representatives to plan activities that promote school spirit, and they serve on the Principal's Advisory Council, so they are very visible leaders in their school community. And so they've joined us this evening to lead the pledge. I'd ask you to rise as Bryce and Chandler lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bryce?
Thank you.
Chandler? We appreciate you doing these things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now we'll move to our student recognitions. We have several to honor. First, our winners of the Missouri Department of Conservation Discover Nature State Science Fair. I'd like to invite Parkview students Devon De La Cruz and Lanai Chapman and their teacher, Gloria Gamel, to come forward. Stand forward here. It's Donovan, not Devon. Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon, Donovan. I apologize. Their team took first place in the high school division of the science fair, and their project was on display at the Missouri State Fair just a few weeks ago in the Missouri Department of Conservation Building. To enter the competition, students apply concepts and information they learn in the classroom to create a science project that allows them to test a hypothesis about science and nature. And the question that the Parkview team studied is whether salting roads could harm aquatic life when the melted saltwater washes into local creeks and streams. So they won first place out of about 17 entries in the state science fair. And then in addition to the Parkview team, we had a second grade class at Williams Elementary School that won in the primary division, and their project was what materials caused static electricity on fur. So they rubbed balloons on different types of fur to determine whether static electricity was created. So both these two schools will receive $250 in equipment and materials for their classrooms. So we'd like to congratulate them. Any questions for them? Is Katie Lou present? We had a Central High School student that we were going to recognize, but I don't see her here. Katie Lou is Central High School, and this summer she won first place in the nation in the Introduction to Financial Math competition for FBLA, and that was held in June this summer. We were also well represented at the event by students from Glendale and Kickapoo who competed. So now I will turn the podium over to Marty Moore, who will do our partner recognition.
We know that reading is the foundation of all future learning, and the ability to read transforms lives and empowers children in communities to reach their full potential. Reading for pleasure opens up worlds beyond Springfield city limits and helps us connect to people, places, and experiences that might otherwise be unavailable. A grassroots effort starting in 2001 rallied community support around literacy with a goal of adding needed new titles and replacing outdated materials, and Reading Roundup was born. I think it's interesting that it's been 17 years, so if it had entered our educational system, Reading Roundup would be graduating this year. And so there is some transition underfoot. The achievements of this committee have been far-reaching. From 2000 to 2007, with the combined efforts of the district, Reading Roundup volunteers and others, they added and replaced more than 190,000 library books costing more than $3.6 million. From 2007 to 2017, they raised $150,000 to fund or partly fund 180 librarian requests that impacted 50,000 children. So when you think about the tremendous reach and the impact that this program has had over the years, we certainly have a huge debt of gratitude. Special thanks have come in from lots of different librarians, and there's a story for each of those pages of the book. We've pulled one from Jill Winters, who writes, "The support I received from Reading Roundup allowed me to start Chat and Chew and Reading Buddy programs at my school. Students benefited from these programs by being motivated to engage in library reading programs, improving their reading fluency and comprehension skills. It motivated some of my more reluctant learners. It provided a wider selection of books than we would have had on a variety of reading levels, and students learned to take turns speaking, listening to others, and entertaining another student's point of view." So those are those soft skills that we're trying to embed in that profile of a learner here in our district. I could not have started these Chat and Chew and Reading Buddy programs without the support of Reading Roundup. So special thanks to Ren Lubring for giving us a little bit of a flavor of what that looks like on a wide scale. So 17 years of committees meeting and working, and tonight, we're going to honor that collective impact by recognizing the Reading Roundup team that's in place today. I'd ask that as I call your name, you stand and be recognized and remain standing while we honor David Harrison, Teri Bond, Maury Mecklen, Linda Frederick, Renee Hunt, Angela Castile, and I'm going to ask his lovely wife Sandy Harrison to also stand because she's a big part of this work behind the scenes and managing the leader of the Roundup, who I now ask to join me here with Angela Castile. Please join me in applauding David Harrison. David Harrison has been a valuable member of our community, and I'm grateful that we've had an opportunity to recognize him here in front of the board for those 17 years of service in just this arena, because you've done lots of other things. Do any board members have any questions?
No, you don't want me to start because it took me 17 years to get to this point. You know I don't do anything quickly. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
So I know they'd like to stay for the rest of the board meeting. I'm going to give them the opportunity.
Now I know who I can blame for all those years of Chat and Chew.
Oh, I was a Chat and Chew mom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we move on, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. Charles, your second. Second by team.
That's not it. I'm not.
Ms. Lou, do we have any public comments on agenda items? At this point, I would, as we look at the consent agenda, we have three items to consider: elections, and promotions. We'll vote on those as block. I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items. Motion by Jill, second. Second by Charles.
6.01, Treasuries Report.
Okay, this evening, we have again posted the documents that we typically provide you each month after we move past month of July. And the primary highlights, as indicated on the Treasuries Report, show you that budget amendments for revenue and expenditures are primarily limited to the McKinney-Vento Homeless Grant expenditure revenue amount in the amount of $150,000. And then the other slight changes are representative of aligning the bond fund with the final dollars in that account at June 30 because all of that rolled forward. So with this information, including the budget amendments, our June 30, 2018 estimated fund balance percentage will be 16.47 percent. When we originally presented the budget to you in June, we indicated that it could potentially be 16.6 percent, so that is a slight change, but it does fluctuate throughout the year each month. So keep that in mind, and those changes were relative to closing out the fiscal year. The information relative to closing out FY '17 will be presented once the financial audit is concluded, and that typically would come later in the fall. So we will provide you with those final amounts at that time. Beyond that, we're providing our standard documents, including the capital and investment reports and those transactions, as well as surplus property. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Question, Carol. Let's now entertain a motion to approve the Treasury report as presented. Okay, motion by Denise, your second.
Second.
Second by Lanai.
Nope. It was there.
Okay. Been out there for a second. Moving on to 7.01, ACT testing update.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. President and board members. Tonight, we are bringing you an update on ACT progress and where we're at. As you recall, in 2015, the state of Missouri funded all juniors in the state of Missouri to take the ACT, and we were able to do that for 2015, 2016, and 2017. We are currently waiting for those results, and you'll see those in the three-year trend in our Fall Student Success Report. On July 7, just a few days after you approved the budget, the state of Missouri came out and indicating that funding was being cut for this junior ACT opportunity. So I've asked, the question was posed, should we be thinking about providing that still, or where are we at within SPS? So I've asked analytics under the direction of Amy St. John to come up tonight and present to you a little bit about the participation rate that we've seen over the years, a little bit about the benefits of maybe offering this to our junior class, and maybe some of the risks that are associated with it. So it's my pleasure to introduce Amy St. John to make that happen.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Great.
Good, good. Also, we'll be sharing this presentation with Dave Widdam, who is our Coordinator of Assessment for Springfield Public Schools. So in a little bit, he's going to share a little bit of information, but certainly jump in, Dave, if I say anything wrong, okay? What we're going to talk about, as Dr. Dawson said, is kind of a five-point process, the participation, the beliefs that we have, the benefits of a statewide assessment, kind of where that comes from, and why do states move to that, and then what would it look like as a district-wide move? And then what risk do we have if we move forward and others don't? It's kind of a chess move that you have to think about, and then what recommendations you have coming to you from our department. So with that, the participation through the years has looked as this table is laid out for you. When DUSCIE began to administer the 11th grade ACT, they called it the census data. So it was never intended to hurt anyone. It was only intended to benefit. So we had moved to MSAP V with the college and career readiness measures, and ACT was one of those, still is one of those. And so at that time, they thought it was sort of a leveling of the playing field because they were saying, okay, we will offer this. That way, all the students, we would talk about point in the bucket. We've talked about kids being able, looking to see if they were going to be ready for college and career based upon that type of information. And so going back, to better organize, it's sometimes hard to think about because they take it as a junior, but when do they graduate? And so you can see that we've got that labeled for you. The class of 2016, they were 11th graders in 2015. So you can see the size of the junior class, the participation rate through the years, what that average composite was, and then I thought maybe you would want to see what is our composite as compared to the state, which is what we show in our Student Success Report. So you can see that the trend has been about 90 to 93 percent. We do see a little bit less this past April, and that was due to kind of a right-fit move. So we started really working with buildings and determining if it was the right fit, both cognitively for that student, if it was not a fit for that student based upon other measures that we knew. In IEP, for instance, we did not ask that student to take the test. It was an option for them. So we did kind of do the right fit as the years have gone on. In addition to that, you can see that there is a downward trend in the average composite score, but it stays the same gap between us and the state. The whole state did see that. ACT makes slight changes too through the years, and that can also play a factor in that. As Dr. Dawson said, on July the 7, we got this news that was kind of an urban legend for a little while, that DUSCIE would not be able to continue funding it, and that did come to be in a memo that we received that they had cut that from the budget. So they no longer would be supporting that. One of the things that I think is important for us to talk about, that Marty and I talk about often or others, as we talk about the strategic plan, and that's really the beliefs that we have, that when you do offer something to all students, that it provides an opportunity for equity, to access for that. And so we talk about that. Dr. Jungman talked a lot about access, access, making sure that all kids have that opportunity. And so even teasing out Focus Area 1, Goal 2, and making sure that we have equitable access for those students, and what you can see is where were we since 2009? What was our life before? And you can see we hovered in that 60 to 70 percent participation, and then we jumped into the 90s. So it makes sense, but I think it's just important to see that kind of on a scale. So if we trend the other direction, so we would go back to the 60s or 70s because that's how many students opted in without us administering it during a school day and with a device. So the other option before was that they only could go on a Saturday. Okay? Yes?
Can you speak a little bit more about the right fit? And then is that in law? I mean, it wasn't a dramatic.
No.
Like 3 percent or something.
Right. About 40 kids, I think, different than the overall.
Yeah, but that doesn't cut against the equity and access policy.
It doesn't. It was really based upon working with case managers, working with their, I said, mostly cognitive abilities. The students' cognitive abilities don't kind of point to that as an option for them. Then we didn't want to, in some places, people would even say humiliate. You don't want to put a student through a process that is just not a fit. So we were really more aware of that as this past spring came through.
So was that a one-way right fit, or did it go the other way from the student or parent standpoint? Was it our decision on the right fit?
Collective, through the IEP process, the parents are aware of that, and it was offered to all. So I want to make that very clear. We didn't take it away from anybody. Right. We just didn't force anybody. We didn't mandate it. We just made it an option.
We made the decision not to force it on anybody, but somebody could decide not to take it if they didn't want to take it at all.
Yes.
We actually typed up a letter for them to sign up for it if they wanted to.
Yep.
It was never a mandate, was it?
No, but we know, just talking to other school districts, that the differences can be that the district ensures that 100 percent of the students take it, and when you say 100 percent of the students take it, then technically it's a mandate, and we were just more of the mindset to make sure that they had the option, but we didn't force them to take it, if that makes sense.
Yes. So another way to look, I'm sorry, did I cut in front of you? Another way to look at this is, so 60-ish percent of our kids were paying to take their own ACT test.
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday.
Mm-hmm. Right, right. The way we've always known it, correct. The last three years is when it happened during the school year. It happened, this past year, we actually went online. It was offered, ACT offered it as an online option, and we went for it. We were just one of three of the area school districts that went there. We wouldn't go back. It was wonderful. It was a wonderful experience for the buildings. There was a little angst and worry, but Dave did a masterful job of ensuring that they had all the skills and tools that they needed in advance, and it went really, really good.
Do you have any way of tracking how often students take the ACT? Do you think this is legal? I'm guessing this is not the only time that many students take it, which is, I think, a shift sometimes. It never occurred to me frequently. I took it once because I had two children.
Oh, he's been doing this for a while.
That is a great question, and that actually feeds nicely into an ending part of this presentation. But very specifically, yes, we can calculate that. We do calculate that, and I could definitely make it a part of the fall report, or at least even part of the narrative, if you'd be interested. What we did start to see with MSAP V, when it became that a certain level, you got a point, or a point and a half, or a half a point, you look at that. That is kind of the era that we did start to see more kids taking it because the adults would say, oh, my gosh, you're so close. I mean, because we were focused technically on the scores based upon our accreditation, but what happened is a one-point difference in the ACT can be as much as $30,000 in scholarships. And so as a mother of a senior right now, I'm just saying, it made the awareness come up, and that was a good thing. Right. We did see more students taking advantage of that. But yes, we can certainly add, that's a great question. So the benefits, when you wonder, why does a whole state move? Why would a whole district move? There's benefits of that kind of equity and access, as we talked about, because it identifies or increases the identification of sort of unknown talent. So there are students that would have never, or could have never, gone on Saturday morning. We'll say the average Amy, so not even necessarily the one who we could get the free or reduced pricing for, but the one who just doesn't have the funding but doesn't meet that qualification either. Maybe it's a timing issue. Maybe it's a transportation issue. There's all kinds of pieces. So by doing it at school during school makes a huge difference to lots of kids. In addition to that, it increases their interest or awareness to college planning because apart of the ACT process, it actually asks certain questions, gives them a nice report back. It does activate colleges starting to have conversations with them, and the mail even starting to come to them, and that may be a conversation they never would have had had they not had that opportunity. And most importantly, and there's a lot of research, both in our district as well at the national level, it increases their college attendance, especially for minority and low-income students, because it creates their belief, their understanding that they can do it, that they didn't understand even existed before. So the chart to the right there shows the, now, I'm going to shift with you and go to the 12th grade. So we take it as a junior, but now when we start to look at 12th grade students, I wanted to kind of do a before and after. So the left side is 2014, and that's before the statewide census of the ACT. So about 999 students took the test, and then the 287 students met the criteria for free or reduced. Okay? Then when you look at the students in 2016, you have 1,534 who took it, and 561 of the students had that lunch status. That's 274 more students who benefited or could have benefited from that. So what we're showing you there is, again, it increased that opportunity, which of course is going to have that for students who wouldn't have had it before.
Well, but the of course part is where I want to see some more information. Is that what the next slide is, to tell us what did?
Quite possibly.
My so hopes.
Shall we have a drum roll, or pass out Kleenexes? I don't know which. I'm actually going to let Dave tell this part of the story. Dr. Dawson and I were talking about a week ago about this type of data and just kind of framing our mind around the information. And his idea was, I wonder if we have students that are students that we could tell the story? You can tell them about national stories, but do we have our students? And I said, I don't know. And he goes, I know it's a short timeframe, but man, that'd be really interesting to say, to tell that story. And Dave has this wonderful relationship with the buildings because we have identified people that are the site test coordinators. Those are his connections whenever it's time to administer a test. So he first reaches out there and he says, hey, I'm just looking for a story of a kid who might have taken it, who then also, you know, something magnificent happened afterwards. That led to talking to counselors, and I'll just be the clicker, and you can tell the rest, okay? So let's talk about the SPS students benefiting and our own data stories.
So the first story, we have a single mom who is kind of emancipated from her family. So she doesn't receive any parental support, had no plans to attend college. And then we have another student who was free and reduced lunch. He was always, he always played school well, got good grades, really didn't have any motivation to do anything in the future. And, next slide, had another one, another student who unclear of what their path was going to be, wanted to go to West Point, but just really wasn't sure how. So, she doesn't receive any parental support, had no plans to attend college. And then we have another student who was free and reduced lunch. He was always, he always played school well, got good grades, really didn't have any motivation to do anything in the future. And, next slide. Had another one, another student who unclear of what their path was going to be, wanted to go to West Point, but just, just really wasn't sure how he should get there. And then, we had another student who was a free lunch status, who didn't have any plans at all to attend college.
And the counselors would say, they had potential, but they didn't have direction. They had potential, they didn't have motivation. They didn't believe what I believed in them. Those are the stories that he literally just got back in the last 24 hours. And so, now, what you know to be true of our students and our data stories, our students, this is what happened.
So, this first student, he took the ACT, he got a 20, what was it, a 27, which kind of surprised him as a junior. He didn't really know.
It's reverse order, it's reverse.
No, this is.
I'm going to overlay what happened to that student. So, I'm overlaying what happened to that student.
Oh, it's like a secret. We have to wait. We're not really good at that.
He was the one that kind of played school, but he didn't really know his ability until he got this back. And then, he really started talking to counselors, and he motivated himself and enrolled, and is currently attending MSU. And he scored, I mean, he scored a 27, just unknowingly. And he never took advantage of the free and reduced tests, that are the Saturday tests that we talked about. So, without this opportunity, he would have never participated.
Is he a freshman?
Yes, I believe so. So, that's one success story. Another one is the student who wasn't quite sure where they wanted to go, took it, got a 23 or 24.
23.
And that kind of motivated him to investigate West Point. And he found out that he really needed to get a 25 before he could enroll there. So, he studied up, got a 25, is accepted, and continues to attend West Point. The other student here, she was kind of in the same boat as the MSU student that I talked about. Always played school well, got good grades, really didn't have too much motivation, didn't participate in the Saturday test, didn't intend to ever take it, and took it. Got a 20, what was it, 24, 23. Motivated her even more once she started looking at colleges, took it again on her own as a Saturday with the free and reduced, and qualified for scholarships to attend CIO. And then our single mom scored a 24.
She's still with us, she's a senior.
Yeah, and she didn't plan on going to college, but she works, and she is definitely planning to go now, because that door was open for her. And it happened at school, it wasn't a Saturday, so she didn't have to find childcare, it was just another day at school. And so, these are just four of those students that, I mean, West Point's a pretty big deal. And I was pretty surprised with that.
I would say all of those are a big deal, given that we started it not even. So, I know someone who can help the one in the top-left corner with options, so if you want to let her know.
We'll do it.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Wish you missed the feel-good part, Bruce.
With that reward, Ken provide, the risk is also there. And so, I want to make sure that we talk about that. This is as of the time that we were putting the presentation together, we reached out to some of our surrounding friends, or like-size districts and that. So, again, it's a just move. If we move forward and we make this decision, you can see, as I talked last year, about where that can take an average, right? That's just the law of averages, the more students that you put into the hopper, that's going to happen. It sort of was okay, if you will, when we were all doing that, and we were all moving in that direction. But we do have that as a risk, if we decide to move forward and the others don't. And so, you just have to know that. I don't think that that's what we hang our hat on in Springfield Public Schools. I think it's more about the benefits and the stories of our students, and making the right move for them. But I just wanted to be very clear that that's the case. The friends that were in the no decision and still thinking, were really sort of like us. So, they're in the time, right now, where they're talking with their school board and their district to find out what the plan is. So, we technically would have answered, no decision, still thinking, but yet, we are bringing recommendation forward that we believe that we should continue to offer that for our students.
Did you say when we needed to decide?
When do we need to decide?
Did you say when we needed to decide? Every time I ask.
I mean, literally, we're on the same.
Are you aware of any districts that have said no?
We are not.
Still deciding.
You will hear, you will hear some districts talk about right test, right kid, which is kind of the era we were in before, and that they, they want to make sure that every student has that opportunity. But unless you make it as a district decision, and correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but unless we make it as a district decision, we can't offer it during the school day. And so, that's the important part of making it as a school district decision versus even paying for all the students on Saturday, but the challenges are still there, because it's Saturday versus the regular school day.
Right.
So, with that recommendation from our department, we would suggest, or say to you that either are, the future would, should include this offering to all of the junior class. The options for doing that, or with or without the writing component, we are not currently seeing a lot of interest in the writing component of the ACT. That was a piece that had come on about four or five years ago. Not a lot of colleges, this is, the information coming back from our counselors, not a lot of colleges need that piece. So, you kind of see two price points there, one with the writing, and then one without. So, it's a $45 a student in that, so it brings it to about $76,000.
From the counselors, did you hear that the colleges didn't want it for admission or for scholarship purposes?
It was more for admission. That's a good clarification.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Point of clarification, is it based upon admission or for scholarship opportunities?
Because I think probably relatively few will use it for admission, more will use it for scholarships.
That's a good point. Have that opportunity.
And that would be a matter of us doing a better job of advertising that importance. Yeah, so that's.
It's a good point, I'm glad that you said that.
I'm glad he told you, and she'll put it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Get that right back to the lead counselor, so.
The current structure that the department offered, was it writing or non, right?
With the writing. Which does also increase the time significantly. It's a six-hour test with the writing, it's a four-hour test without the writing, because you do the break, and then you take, it's not a technically like six-hour test, but that's what the building commitment is, is that, that six-hour timeframe, so. Yes.
So, can you give me context on, so, we had the funding for three years, we found out why we don't have the funding. Is this, do we know that it's, the funding is no more, or the funding is not this year?
The funding is not this year is the only information we have.
Yeah, we would, that is up for annual state allocation. It wasn't a department decision to stop the ACT, it was a legislative decision to not supply the same amount of funding, so that, I believe the department will ask for that funding again next year, but that is a legislative decision that will play out. They have communicated that, but it wasn't their design this year to step away from it. It was a legislative decision to reduce the assessment budget at the department.
And so, it's not one of those things that like mid-year, they realize they have enough money, and so they would give us money, or?
Not for this year. I mean, the cut was significant to the assessment budget, and they've said, there's a bottom line, and I can't see the legislature reinserting the dollars. They would take some significant action to make that happen.
So, whereas I very much appreciate four anecdotal stories about people. Do you think it is possible, not necessarily one for one, but could we receive a better idea of how many people are accessing this, or it's resulting in college entrance than if we went back to the pay-as-you-play way?
I think that's, I think absolutely, I think your awareness is kind of where our awareness is too. It wasn't one of the things that we built in, as we thought, you know, as this was kind of playing out for the last three years. But I think now, moving forward, it's changed our thinking. And so, we have mechanisms in place where we could ask students, we could ask counselors to ask students. We already have that personal planning time with students and counselors, where they could add this piece to that and collect that data point. So, absolutely, I think it's changed our thinking as to sort of that return on investment from your seat, but return on investment from our seat in terms of educating and giving out the next opportunity. So, yes, I believe that would be something that we would add to.
Because that doesn't seem cost prohibitive at all, but we are faced with competing interests.
Absolutely.
And it makes sense to know that we're doing something that is actually leading to the kind of outcome we want to see for people, which is an opportunity they wouldn't have had. And that's how you justify this.
Absolutely.
And that's kind of our goal for long-term, right? Moving, and we'll have to start playing that way, because of the state, we can't depend on them at this point, based on what happened here to fund this. So, moving forward, that's what we'll track. We can't necessarily go back and figure that out for the past few years.
Well, but that's, I appreciate you saying that, because that's a reason to take a chance on this and then start keeping track of it. It's not a ton of cash.
We would recommend, let's do it for the year. Let's start to use the feedback from our counselors, and try to collect that, to make sure it's a wise investment, that we kind of have on our radar, depending on what the state does. Do we leave it in the budget to allocate? And then, we'll also know what the legislature decides to do next year.
I don't foresee it coming back, if I was in my predicting mode.
No. We can, we can make a change immediately too, just for the graduating class of 17. So, when we do the graduation follow-up on that group of students, starting in December, we can add it to the questionnaire that we're already going to ask them. That's one next move that we can already make, no cost move. That's just, we're already asking them the questions that DESI asked us to ask them, so we'll just add, "How did this affect you?" You know, I mean, we'll phrase it in a way that would make sense. And then, and then certainly, as the junior class were to take it again, we would kind of front-load that. We are interested in your stories, and we could, you know, kind of tell it that way too. So, yeah.
So, taking a test and getting a score is one thing, but can you tell me what our practice is for who reviews the scores with students?
Who reviews the scores with students?
Who impacts that for them?
It's a variety of ways within the different high schools. So, you have advisory-type classrooms, where there's a smaller group of students with a mentor or an adult throughout the time, and that varies in how that structures throughout each of the high schools. Plus, you have the connection to the counselor. Counselors are devised in a couple of different ways. Some of them are the junior-class counselor versus by alphabet and things of that nature. So, there are at least two adults that are making those connections. Beyond that, we have, for groups of students that are, like our CSIs are kind of working with smaller groups of students as well, and encouraging them based upon other factors that we're seeing, at-risk factors, and working through that. And so, ACT becomes a data point, it doesn't become the focal point, it just becomes a data point for us to, again, encourage and offer those opportunities for students. Good question. Yes?
Additionally, we've had two-thirds take the A's before.
About the 60, 60.
About that, about that number. So, if one-third didn't take it because they saw no need.
Or a barrier?
Why would it?
Because it's too hard to get there on a Saturday, it costs too much. Your family doesn't afford that kind of venture.
If they were paying for it individually, it wasn't offered during the school day, when the state started.
Yeah, right.
So, that's become the barrier. Right, that the state started paying for it and became administered during the school day, and fully funded by state.
So, we don't know that more than that, we don't know of the other third. We don't know for sure that that was the barrier, was the cost.
That's why I'm asking, can we find out?
So, if they take it, but they really don't intend, I mean, it's almost like, "I don't intend to go on to college, so I don't want to take this test, so you're making me take it, and I'll sit down and take it, but it means nothing to me." It was kind of like the state test to me. It's like, here you take the state test, the map test, but it doesn't mean anything with my grade, it doesn't mean anything to me, so why should I try to do my best? So, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, for some, I get that. It's during the day, so they can't come on Saturday because they work, and they're trying to do that, so. But some others would say, "Why am I taking this test? Because that's not my..." Now, we're trying to change their vision and change their goals, I don't know that, I just kind of wonder, making them take the ACT test is going to change it, or it's going to verify with them, that's not what I should have been doing. And that's also subj, I mean, it's just was, since we don't, still don't know, I mean, we know certain junior, we know all juniors took it in 2017. So, in 2018, we'll, based on our graduation thing, we'll know how many more people have decided to go on to enter college than decided the year before. And I don't know if we can track it back to, oh, they had to take the ACT test, so they decided to go on and do it.
I think that's what will lead to a survey question. You really have to ask them that, did this have an impact? Because they may have had some other factor, right, that led to them deciding to do that, but it really, it's a kid-by-kid question of, was this an obstacle? Did this overcome an obstacle for you? Did this provide you an opportunity? And that's what, we're going to figure out how to get that data, determine if it's a long-term investment or a short-term, short-term investment.
And I don't like the conscription aspect of it. I don't think we should make anybody. What I want to do is make the opportunity available.
Right.
And I got some support from that from my friends, so occasionally, even a blind sprog gets a, I got that one right.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting question that a, the correlation, evidence for the correlation seems pretty suggestive to me, that more students are not simply doing it because they have to do it. I mean, anybody can make little pictures when you fill in the little bubbles, right? You can make stars and things like that in there. But my sense is, the scores have been tracking at the state average, so it's not as if people are going at all. And I, at this point, even the absence of conclusive evidence, I'd much rather hang my hat on the one, or two, or 50, or 70 kids who didn't know what they didn't know perhaps, and now they believe that we believe in them, or whatever the case may be. I'd much rather hang my hat on that possibility than the one of kids just like that. And I'm exaggerating your point, you know, to make a point, so.
We thank you for your engagement tonight around ACT. What we will do is, this will be open for discussion, but we'd ask you to give us some feedback. And at this point, we would bring it as a September amendment to the budget, unless we hear differently from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a timeline to hit for ACT? Obviously, we posted that up there for you on your last slide, so. If you have any feedback, and this is not a, we're not asking you to approve a test, because we don't have you to approve individual assessments and buying of those. You approve the budget. We would bring a budget amendment for the assessment budget at the upcoming meeting in order to make that play out, so. If you have any additional questions, let us know. We would say it as a one-year, it's a one-year move, and then we would evaluate moving forward.
That's good. You kind of saw, we hear you, man, we're done. Thank you all.
If you have any other questions, bring me my.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 8.01, board policies. We have two policies that we need to approve tonight. Board policy ADF, District Bonus Program, and EDFA, Conflict of Interest in Financial Dislocation. They were presented at the last meeting for first read, and I assume there's no?
It's disfirst read, it's official.
And I assume there's no comments for those? Okay.
No, but I might like to say something else about the ACTs. Would that be all right? I'm just making fun of Mike. No comment.
That's what you really want to do. I yield to the press.
You're in charge, I have no idea.
I'm done.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve those two policies, ADF and EDFA. That, the most, hey, the motion, or your second?
Second.
Second by Tanner.
Oh, geez. I'm still thinking about the A's too. I voted. I know, but I'm not.
Okay. We do have another policy that would be a first read tonight, which is policy FS for facility names.
Carol, any comments for that?
It simply adds a paragraph that allows for sections of buildings to be handled in a very similar. in a very similar process with ultimately bringing that forward to the board for approval. But it allows us to have the superintendent or designated appoint the committee to take care of the transaction. So it's, it's not a comprehensive acquisition or newly-built facility. It's simply a small section of a building for the rent. And this was with MSBA that we worked through, the language.
And the section on the products that go, whether it's that same as, I mean, that same as.
That does not change. It only adds that small paragraph.
So give it a review. Give us any questions. It's not for vote tonight, but we are first reading it because there are some pending things that we would like to get moving if possible.
Vote on it next week.
Okay.
Get your comments to, to Carol. We have no new business. Unfinished business. We have a public hearing for the change of tax levy. Anybody got any questions for my summary before I ask for motion to approve the Ad Long Property Act? That said, I would ask that the board approve the 2017-18 tax rate of $0.9485 for general fine and $1.5943 for the interest fund and $0.55 for my debt service fund for a total levy of $4.0928 for 100 evaluation. That was an account.
So I agree.
Okay. Alina made a motion to approve. Your second?
Second.
Second by Tim. Okay, thank you. Next item of unfinished business is the East Metropole High School for the Monroe Street Expansion. Questions? I'm up for that one?
I've looked at them. I get it. I recommend we vote up.
Okay. Is that motion?
Move for approval.
Move by Tim to approve. Your second?
Second.
Second by Carol. Approve the Ticklewood High School.
No, but I'm going to drive there.
Be better in the.
I voted for the good of the people, not the good of Jill Patters. Post-punk. I got another one coming.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 11.01, public comments for non-agenda items. We do have three requests to rest the board. And I would like to just remind the speakers that the Board of Education will have comments on topics not related to President Jennings. Comments will be limited to three minutes for each speaker and will be timed, and you'll see the little clock up on the screen. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meetings. If you have concerns about individuals, these type of concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. And our first speaker is Sharita Thomas-Tate.
Greetings to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharita Thomas-Tate. I am a professor of communication science and disorders at Missouri State University, recently tenured.
Congratulations.
We're not counting that against you though.
I'm also a board member for the NAACP here in Springfield, and I'm a foster parent to children who attend Springfield Public Schools. I would like to congratulate the board on the success of our programming with Ujima. We've had great partnerships over the last couple of years. We've expanded, we've grown. I got a couple of emails from family members, parents of children who participate in our program just yesterday. Have a two-year-old who enjoys reading, who didn't like books before participating, and a one-and-a-half-year-old sent a picture, sent a picture of him laying on the floor reading some of the books that he got from Ujima. So we know that our program is being beneficial to some of our kids, and we're really, really excited about that. And we appreciate the district's efforts to partner and cooperate with diverse constituents in your, in our, in our community. As you prepare to make decisions about facilities, I hope that you will keep in mind some noted disparities in school buildings, especially those between north and south side schools. These disparities contribute to anticipate gaps in achievement to some of the students in our district with the greatest needs. Finally, and wake up the horrible acts of hate and racism on the campus of the University of Virginia in Charlottesville, I urge the board to aggressive, to be aggressively proactive in developing culturally competent and anti-racist environment for all students in our district. No place is immune, not even Springfield, Missouri is immune to the kinds of things, things that we saw in Charlottesville. We can put our heads in the ground and act like things won't happen here, but we have to be proactive in making sure that they don't. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a minute to clap about that tenure. That's really great. Congratulations.
Okay, next speaker, Carl Hurd.
Greetings. Foundations of Knowledge for the 21st Century, I believe you have a copy.
It's coming around.
Okay, it's being passed around.
It's coming around.
All right. School board members, Dr. Jungman, and educators, you were recently challenged to see students through others' eyes. I believe that was on a Monday at Hammond's. My challenge to you is to see your role on the school board from a different perspective. Is there a body of knowledge that students should master without using any devices? To you board members who are parents, grandparents, maybe great-grandparents, I challenge you to give this test to your children, students that is, not grown children. After they take the test, I am asking you to mail the answers to me. Carl Hurd, P.O. Box 2764, Springfield, Missouri, 65801. P.O. Box 2764, Springfield, Missouri, 6801. I believe you also have my phone number if you wish to call me. You're welcome to do that. One of the goals of education is to prepare students to enter the workforce. Another goal is to prepare students to live life to the fullest. What a boring world it would be if everyone had the same talents and knowledge. The 21st century will undoubtedly present many challenges. Technology is useful, but not the end-all. Technology is both creating jobs and eliminating jobs. How will everyone cope with the 21st century challenges? Everyone may face blackouts, brownouts. Remember the NIXA septication problems recently? Climate change, earthquakes, tornadoes, droughts, riots, food shortages, or even war. Remember the ice storm of 2007? Let the Springfield area become a desert. The water table is constantly dropping. Our lakes have a limited lifespan. Now, Springfield is a good place to live, and many more people are coming here, and that compounds a problem. A well-balanced educational system will best prepare students for the 21st century. This test runs deeper than you might think. Think independently. Time is up, and you have, I saw you writing down my P.O. Box. Thank you for listening, and this has been fun.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mark Monday.
It's awesome to be here with you today. I do believe that we probably have one of the best education systems in all of America, but I am highly concerned. I'm an ordained singing evangelist. I also own the Ozarks Jubilee. I have been blessed to live the American dream. I'm going to be touring Israel and also Europe singing. Went to Doc your wall back, and some of you not old enough to know, but I had shot put in each knee, and my legs were given back to me. So I'm very thankful for that. You know, it's, American dream is a very special thing, and these young people are gifts of God that you are very responsible for. I have visited in over forty state and federal penitentiaries, been blessed to sing on over twenty-five military bases across America, a few thousand churches, about fifty years ago, starting us thirteen, right, through Studi and Central. We were number one in mathematics, science, and history, and we did know how to read. And I'm not being, I really want to stay positive. I have a concert coming up on Park Central Square on 911. We're inviting the military. We're inviting schools. Why, I love America. This negative attitude stuff to destroy this great republic called the United States of America, some of us are sick of it. I have two gifted students that go to Glendale High School, both in the band, and we're leaving a hell of a mess for them. I'm tired of it, so I'm going to try to really be positive, and I'm going to try to spread a positive message. James Madison said, "Cursed be all that learning that's contrary to the cross of Christ." Abraham Lincoln stated, "If I can find a church that will preach that thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, thy mind, and thy spirit," I'd love to serve that church with my heart, mind, and spirit. There's a book called William Feder's America's God and Country. I would not take $5,000 for that book. It is our American, his story. If you're not teaching the full concepts, and as far as tearing down the landmarks, what's next? Is that going to be the Ten Commandments? Is it going to be George Washington? Anything that stands for the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and those great things and those history? I do love America. Please let these kids know our great American history. May God bless you, and thank you for serving our children.
Sure. We'll pass it over to Karen. So Ms. Penny, ready?
Just very quickly, we started, started school fully-staffed, and classrooms are up and running, and all of our subs, we've had a number of subs each day, fully-staffed. Penn Mac's been doing a fantastic job working with us to make sure that we have qualified folks in the classroom, so we're, we're off to a good start.
Thank you.
Just want to also extend a thank you to our teachers and our administrators, our bus drivers, food nutritional folks for making the first day so successful. We have so many people behind the scenes who make that learning experience for that five-year-old or that fifteen-year-old walking into the classroom a great experience. Want to thank all of our executive leaders who had something to do with Summer Academy, our Ignite Kickoff, SPS Now training for curriculum, or Activate SPS with our keynote speaker, mine Scott. We had Teresa Bloodsoe at her office, we had Dr. Hackmore's, we had Dr. Pillies' office with Dr. Marty Moore, we had Kathy Gross, lots of hands-on deck, and all of those events in such a short amount of time to provide our teachers the skills and the motivation and the inspiration to kick off the school year. I also want to thank, we have so many community partners, I can't even list them all, who donate school supplies into our system, providing kids the necessary tools to start the year, from bus drives to people just dropping off, air, I found that this was on sale, we're bringing it in. So I want to thank Rhonda Hammond and her team who coordinate and the counselors who make sure that those supplies get to the hands of the right kids. I want to thank Annie Wallemeyer for helping us not go blind yesterday with the eclipse. She was the driving force who provided us our glasses, curriculum resources, safety lessons on how to make sure we're doing this correctly. So it was a huge success for our school district, and I think it was awe-inspiring for kids to think about science in a different way. I want to provide you just a couple of quick updates on initiatives launched. As you know, we talked about a thousand seats this first year, 200 and 400 and 400. We are very close to hitting that 200-seat mark, probably in the next week for launch in the fall semester. So it's really, we have a number of partners who've said, yeah, we want to, our, that, our seats are filling up quickly. So I want to thank Blended Learning for everything they're doing in that role. Club Encore, we brought to you as our initiative of after-school programming. We brought stakeholders group, we rebranded it. We have sent out, as you have seen your desks there, this is the brochure that will be sent to all, direct mailing to all eligible students in our system to help them close that achievement gap that are around specific knowledge standards that we are needing to beef up in our system. And we were also worried about teacher workforce. Will we have enough teachers to go? Well, we just put that application out, and within just a few days, we have over a hundred teachers who have said, I'm willing to be part of that. And many of them say, not just a Monday, Wednesday club, but I'll actually do a Tuesday, Thursday also. So we have a number of teachers who have said, this is the right thing, and I want to be part of it. So we got a lot of great stuff happening, and this is just the first day of school. So thank you for your support.
Carol?
And I would like to thank Mike Dawson for thanking everyone for us.
We thank Carol every.
Yes, seriously, we do. We do have a number of great people filling many roles on our team. The only serious note that I will highlight this evening is the Request for Information Process from both Dolly and Pepperdine. So that did get launched, and I want to ensure that everyone understands that there is a big proposal meeting in this very room on August 30, 2017, at 3:00 p.m., where interested persons or entities may attend and learn from the Realtor about the properties that is being facilitated by Sperry Van Ness Rankin Realtors that held here in our building. The final deadline for submitting proposals for the Request for Information Process is October 16 at 3:00 p.m. And again, everything flows through Sperry Van Ness Rankin. So just a reminder of that upcoming event, and then we'll engage in the process of evaluating any proposals received. Thank you.
And just to finish us up, it has been a wonderful start, and we appreciate everyone's incredible support. Highlight was bringing the 150th Anniversary Kickoff together, I do believe, 1118K. We're excited to have our teachers encouraged about what we've done in the past and what we're going to do in the future. So it was a really great start. I know most of you were able to attend, Jerry was out of town on that day, but hopefully you had great feedback. We're also kind of carrying that 150th Anniversary moving forward, so we're going to try to celebrate that all year long as part of our, part of our system and really pay tribute to our educators and those that make a huge impact. One of the coolest things I think we did that day was pay tribute to long-term educators of 20 years and more in three different ways that we recognize. So it was a fun, fun event. Enrollment numbers are coming in. Those are never solidified till after Labor Day, so lots of transfers out, lots of transfers in, just like every other year. I can tell you every day, we have kids walk in the door and say, we're ready to learn. And we will have that happening all the way through Labor Day when it really stabilizes. So we'll bring you updates when those are more stable. And then the other thing that I've been mentioning for the last couple of weeks, September Study Session, which is our next meeting, we will have data from the community feedback on bond issue results. So we'll have external and internal survey data that'll be shared with you at the part of, at that meeting. We will follow that up, I do believe, on the schedule with, in depth, you'll get that information next time. You'll want time to process that and dialogue about it. I think we're scheduling that for mostly the retreat, and that would be in October, which is our annual retreat that we bring together. We're looking at October 30th for the date for that at this point. So that's what I have. Nothing legislatively, it's been pretty quiet this time.
Questions for Karen? Upcoming meetings? Upcoming meetings?
She has something to say.
Oh, just board comments.
We had a big day, and I know she wants to tell you about it.
Well, I have several things to talk about. I think it's important that, you know, as a board, that we also congratulate and thank the staff, John and his dream team, I think as Manny referred to them, for the day. I've been in the district for many, many years, and I don't recall an event that was so positive and teachers felt so appreciative of that event. I mean, we, we have done some things in the past, but that was absolutely amazing, so thank you, thank you for that. The rest of that afternoon and the next day, I did have a chance to visit a few schools, because I believe it's important to go when teachers can visit with you a little bit. And no offense intended to the board, but on my first day of teaching, the last people I learned to see in the classroom. So I went the days before school started and got to visit with a lot of teachers, and I'd say about sixty-five plus. Every single teacher I stopped in their classroom said, "Thank you for that day." They said it was amazing, and some were still a little teary-eyed, but they felt so appreciated, and they felt so energized and inspired. And it's interesting that the little slogans that they had in the room already, I know this was Tuesday, had something to do with what the speaker challenged us to do, so it was extremely amazing. And then also, a shout-out to the teachers and the work they've done in their classrooms. Every year, I'm amazed by what our teachers do to these cinder block square rooms to make them special and, and an exciting and happy, I use that term again, happy place for our kids to come to school. I saw beaches, I saw coffee cafes, I saw rooms that were decorated to look like a science lab, and every room was about reading, 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 character building.
We saw hanging rodents.
We bought...
We saw hanging rodents, too.
Yes.
Just, just to round it out.
We saw many things, and some of the learning centers, the library slash learning centers were absolutely awesome. I would love to spend time in those rooms. And then, things that were so coordinated, from curtains to bulletin boards to tables and chairs, and as, I went to one amazing classroom, went to Williams, second-year teacher, and just walked into her room, and I know, I kinda had fun with her, saying, "Oh, did the Little Elves come overnight and do this for you?" Because I'm sure it was at least three weeks or more, more beyond contract time, that she put into this classroom, but what a wonderful environment for a child to walk into, so. And I also had several principals that, "We're very busy, but stop to take a little time, please don't bother with me, I know my way around, I'm on the bill," but they wanted to show me things amazing, things that they've done in their buildings, like sensory rooms, which was also a playful place to spend some time, to be able to chill out in time, so it's just that it's so exciting to get out and to see what our very dedicated staff do just to make things pleasant for kids, and that tells me a lot about their dedication and the commitment they're about for our students. I'm done.
You're not gonna talk about...
Oh, you can talk about it.
No, you.
But we also had a chance to go to MSU, to the celery club yesterday, and Jill and I had the unusual, unplanned opportunity to be around one of our schools that took the kids there. So we got to sit with the children and hear their comments about the clubs, and they're excited, and that was just kind of an added bonus there to being on college campus, plus excited. And again, a reminder of how important it is that we encourage our children at a young age that, "You can do this, you can come to school here, this could be in your future too."
No, you did good on that stuff.
The kids had some of my banana, that was the most...
I got stuck in traffic.
I bet. I bet. Well, I'll put that shout-out. All the people, looking out my window, I looked out before we went out, and there's so many hundreds of people of all ages there to enjoy that at Missouri State, and they actually handled that traffic really well. I thought that was gonna be a disaster, and it was, we fared better than you, you should've come with us.
From Eldon to Lake of the Ozarks was two hours. I don't think anybody was from Missouri. They were all from Ohio, Texas. It was a popular strip across the state, but it was worth it. Okay, getting back, upcoming meetings.
Let's have some.
Show anything other than board meeting? Okay, moving on, plus deltas. Don't forget to put your plus deltas, well, it's the improvement.
As well as you were here.
Thank you for calling last, last time, I apologize. Got going, that won't happen again. Okay, we do need to vote for an executive session, so I would entertain a motion that the board meets an executive session, discuss real estate, student discipline, personnel matters, as provided in Section 610021, Sections 23613 and 14, RSMO. Motion by Lena?
Second.
Second by you.